I would like to call the special meeting being proposed. The Lord and the first three.
Trustee Burns, here.
Here.
Trustee Coleman.
Here.
Trustee Jensen.
Here.
Trustee Zach.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Okay, um, there is a special, there is a special meeting being.
Yes.
Speaking to the microphone.
We need to discuss, uh, employment, personnel matters.
Um.
Testing one two, testing one two. Okay, great. We're going to excuse ourselves to speak on personnel and employee matters.
I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel and employment. Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee, uh, Coleman. And clerk. Please call the law.
Trustee Burns, yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yo.
Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Jensen.
Yes.
Trustee Zach.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried. Going to move to executive session.
Is this the special?
I have the first one.
No, you want right here. But you don't have to.
I'll ask for both to reconvene to the committee at the hall. Moved by trustee Burns, seconded by trustee Coleman.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Coleman.
Here.
Trustee Jensen.
Here.
Trustee Zach.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Coleman.
Here.
Okay, public comment, all questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of the village, of Salt Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak up for three minutes and may that engage. Okay, let me rephrase this. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on agenda items only. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak up for three minutes and may that engage. And may, however, it has a little. I will answer and respond to all questions once public comments have concluded. Please state your name. I will make sure that my.
My name is Deborah Turner.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to, um, make a comment in regards to lights out. In the paddocks.
How many?
There are lights out.
This is just an agenda item. The best, I don't get it, but lights out, that can be at the next meeting.
Okay.
You're having something to leave as well. This is just for me. Did you receive an agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just one of the items that are on the agenda.
Okay, so you can't.
I mean, I'll respond to it at the next meeting.
Okay.
At the regular committee meeting that's going to be held. Public meeting is going to be important, you may have to know this way.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm ready, I'm sorry. I am Francine Anderson. And my concern is definitely from your agenda item alone. First of all, I see that all four of the trustees who usually vote together decided that we were having this meeting today. And in your proposal, you have a motion to appoint Mr. Anthony Finch as the internal auditor. My question to you is, you use some different reasoning when you fired AIC. The IT people. Because you said that our former finance director, Dr. Jones, was on their not-for-profit board. That was a conflict of interest. So now I'm asking you, if that was a conflict of interest, then how is bringing Mr. Finch back not a conflict of interest? Mr. Finch, our former village manager and our former finance director. Now you find him, even though he has a lawsuit against the village of Salt Village, being able to be your internal auditor for corporate authorities only, because that is what is read here. Internal auditor reporting to the corporate authorities to commence duties and report to the corporate authorities on Wednesday, November the 20th. So can you please, all four of you, if the mayor would allow, you share your reasoning for such an action when you use the same reasoning to get rid of a whole IT firm? So what are you doing? I think it's time that somebody make this issue plain so that citizens can understand really where you're coming from. If my three minutes is not up, I still have more. Sex. Oh, wonderful. Then the other part of what I don't understand from today's agenda is that while you're appointing this, you called a special meeting today at 6:30, when most citizens are ready and prepared to be at meetings at 7 o'clock. I think you have a habit of changing your special meeting time so that these seats cannot be filled with citizens who are interested in what is going on in the village of Salt Village, because you changed your time. One minute is 6, one minute is 6:30. One meeting was even at 5:30 or at 5 o'clock. So when can you decide? All of this jumping around, indecisiveness, you have the citizens unsure of what can be found, what can be done, and what can be said.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. I stand before you today in public comment, I know that you. Oh, I'm sorry, I am Marva Campbell Pruitt, and I am speaking as a resident, not as the village clerk, okay? And I stand before you to say that I was very disturbed when I saw a former employee who was terminated sitting in an office one day last week. Well, I saw her sitting. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't answer that. Let me be, let me be proper, okay? Then I get the notice for this special meeting, and I see that another individual who was terminated was with our finance department being brought in this evening. Let me share with you the reason I have a problem with it, and I am going to talk faster so that I don't lose my time. I have a problem with it because under both watches, there was $88,000 that still is not accounted for. I'm not placing blame on anyone, but all I can say is, both individuals are suing each other, and they're both suing the village. It's not a good look, it's not a good practice. If we have $88,000 unaccounted for, why are we bringing anyone back that could have remotely been associated with that? Why are we bringing both of them back when they left here in odds? We were totally held hostage with their barrages against one another? Do we want that again, people? When are we going to work on bringing a neutral individual in here and not one that we know is going to walk in here roaring with one another? We got to do better. You guys have to do better. And that's my appeal to you. Let's do better. Thank you.
And so should I just get up and sit down or are you making this? Hey, that's not my question. I had to. I'm just asking.
We've got three meetings to go through. I'm sure at some point.
I asked a simple question.
Not right now, no, we're going to try to move this on. You got two other meetings. So I'm sure.
David Fields, I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. It does not matter what side you sit on in this room. Everything that these majority holders, trustees does affects everybody in this room. Everybody. When they stop things from happening in this village, it does not just affect people that sit on this side of the room or that side of the room, it affects this whole village. And I'm quite sure there's nobody in here that can say there is one thing that these trustees, the four majority trustee vote holders have accomplished in three years that they have been sitting in these seats. This village don't have anything, anything. When it came to the grocery store, survey for the grocery store, they voted it down. They voted it down. As bad as we need that here. And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. The next thing, how is it that they can even consider bringing a person into this village to do an internal audit that is holding a lawsuit against this village? I think that they think that we are really stupid. I'm be honest with you. They think that we are that stupid that we're going to sit back and allow them to be able to bring this person in here to do an audit that's going to work in his favor and their favor. It's going to work against the mayor. It's going to work against us, because that person has an agenda also. A bad agenda toward the mayor, just like they do. And the worst thing about it, it was only one person that had a, 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 a agenda, a, a, a bad situation against the mayor, but it has spilled over to the other people, and they have taken it on. And we all know how that thing work, because of one bad person, we're spending somebody else's ear, and they listening, and they develop the same type attitude that that person had toward somebody else. We all done seen it. We all done seen it. And it's time for this game to stop, because this village ain't advancing no shape, form, or fashion up under these four that holds this majority vote. It's only one person that I consider out of those four that is, is a decent person. Only one lady, and that's Diane Zach. I think that she's a decent person. And, and the reason why this decision to bring Mr. Finch back up in here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My name's Rosie Williams-Bage. Um, I just have a question. With the idea of bringing in an internal investigator, I know Kirk, uh, Marva Campbell Pruitt brought it up. I'm aware of the same thing. Is that part of the goal of bringing them in? Because I'm still confused about the $88,000. I know, I, I maybe know the people aren't confused, but I've attended only a handful of meetings because, I'm not really sure that I see the point in attending meetings. But at a meeting, I know trustee Coleman was very adamant about asking where we were in investigation. That was two years ago. About the $10,000 where the cash just poofed on. And I know when I was a trustee, there was a video camera pointed to the safe. At that meeting, it was said that the camera may have been moved. And when I was a trustee, again, that was a while ago, the cameras were manually moved. I'm not sure if that's different now, I don't know. Haven't set up there since 2017, thank the Lord. So this is, this is financial, and if we could do a tirade for 10 minutes about people's behaviors, I kind of feel like I'm doing the same thing. I understand, but you're interrupting me, so I'm going to catch up today. Then, then the $78,000 that we see come in, but we don't see addressed anywhere. So my question is, is that part of the reason? Because I don't understand how $10,000 in cash could go missing because someone didn't want to go to the bank, because they were waiting on deposit slips to be printed out for them instead of handwriting? And I don't understand how 78,000 dollars can come in the village, and then there's no direct form of where it's supposed to go? And then if you're according to the comptroller's office, three to four years behind on different types of reports, if there's no budget for two to three years, if there's no audit. I've been asking for a TIF meeting. Are all these things going to be a part of the internal investigation regardless of who it is? Because as the director of the library, I've asked for a TIF meeting, and I find out via third person that the mayor posted on his Facebook page, the TIF too closed, when I've been foiling TIF information for years. And I got nothing. They haven't had a TIF meeting since 2017 to my knowledge. I've asked for minutes, I've asked for reports, but it can be on Facebook that the TIF closed? I'm just trying to figure out how that affects other taxing bodies, what type of information? So if whoever you guys choose, is this person going to be able to find out what happened to the $10,000 and follow up with the police department or the state police department, whoever did that? Where's the $78,000 and what's happening with the TIFs? Because that affects my budget just as much as it affects yours. Thank you.
You ready? Jeffrey Burns, 25-year resident, board member 168. I have a comment and I have questions. My comment is, it's public knowledge that Anthony Finch is not suing the village. He's suing the mayor. It's public knowledge. You can Google that. You pull it up right now, you can Google that. Also, I would like to know, how many years are we behind on audits? And I would like to know, uh, since people want to question the amount of money that was stolen, are you willing, Mayor, to put in a claim against Mr. Finch's surety bond? Because we know that's public knowledge that he had one. So that can easily be rectified if you're wondering what, uh, about the finance. So if, if it's true that he supposedly took this money, that's an easy fix. You can do a claim on the surety bond. So my question, Mayor, are you going to do a claim on this surety bond? One, two, how many years are we behind in audits? Three, who's responsible for the audits? And four, are you aware, once we get five years behind in the audits, that the federal government can come in and take over the village? Thank you.
Hi, Deborah Williams, 37-year resident, eight-year clerk, six-year trustee. It's not only the trustees that run the government, it's the mayor and the trustees who are supposed to speak with each other to get things done. We have a mayor who hires and fires employees without the advice and consent of the board, which is against state statutes. He does not respond to us when we ask questions. We don't get financial reports as needed. We are expected to approve accounts payable every two weeks without documentation. And if you want to talk about somebody who's suing the village, trying to bring them back in to work, there is an employee that was recently hired on Monday that we just found out in executive session. And yes, she is the one that was responsible for alleging that there is $78,000 missing. No proof, not one piece of proof, not one piece of paper. It was alleged just to make other people look bad. We have never seen any proof that $78,000 is missing. However, we do have proof that $10,000 was stolen from that safe. We do have proof. So three weeks, money did not go to the bank. No daily drops, no daily drops. $10,000, your taxpayers, your water bill money did not go to the bank. Now, did anything happen to the individual that was in charge of that? She got two raises since then. So you tell me, how is that fair? So no matter what side of the room you stay on, no matter who you are in favor of, the fact is, this village, there is no open and transparent government. There's no open, transparent government between the mayor and the trustees, much less the mayor and the residents. This is ridiculous that we have to get to this point, where we have to come here. When we, when the trustees try to do anything, it's veto. We override it. When you override a veto, you're supposed to be able to move forward. That doesn't happen here. The mayor just describes that overrides, and he just keeps doing what he's doing. We brought an IT company to the table a few weeks ago. We wanted to let them do an assessment, so we can take care of the IT department at this point. We couldn't do it. We couldn't do it. Guess what? There's somebody in that computer room, in that computer room right now, doing an assessment for the mayor, so that he can, 50 seconds, so he can give us an assessment for IT. Trustees can't do it. Trustees have no right. But as a trustee, when I first hand to this table, as a clerk for eight years, one job. Trustee, another job. When the residents come to me and say, when the residents come to me and say, "Why aren't we doing anything about the $78,000? Why aren't we doing anything about the $10,000?" Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's part of the agenda.
No, it's not.
You don't think so? Finance is not part of the agenda? Well, it seems like you're, one person from this side of the room brought it up. It seems like someone from this side of the room brought it up first, and you did not stop in. But you want to stop me. This is what it's all about, people. What it's all about, every single day. Trustees have, nope, we can't, nobody can answer our questions. Nobody wants to talk to us. The mayor's continuing to hire and fire people without coming to the board, which is deadly.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
I'm, thank you. I am Aretha Burns, and I am speaking as a resident. And I want to let everyone know, including Ms. Anderson, who is running for trustee, but have no clue about, speaking, Mr. Mayor. The bottom line, I am going to tell you why we are bringing back, uh, Mr. Finch. Because when we had Mr. Finch here, we had water main breaks that were being repaired properly. We had water main breaks that were being fixed. When Mr. Finch was here, Anthony Finch made sure that our water bills were corrected. We had no problems with water bills when Anthony Finch was here. When Anthony Finch was here, he's the only one that worked in the finance department that had the finance and the audit correct. You know what? That's why we're bringing Mr. Finch back here. We're, we're bringing Mr. Finch back here because he had protocol. We're bringing Mr. Finch back here because he knows what he's doing. We're bringing Mr. Finch back here because he has over 10 years of municipal experience. We're bringing Mr. Finch back because when Mr. Finch was here, this village was running properly. That's why we're bringing Mr. Finch back here. When we, we're, we're bringing Mr. Finch back here because, you know what? Everything that we had to have done, got done. We're bringing Mr. Finch back here because our depart, our, our, our public works department was flowing flawlessly. That's why we're bringing Mr. Finch back here. We're bringing Mr. Finch back here because no one ever sued Mr. Finch, not one resident. But you know what? The woman that you were bringing in, Mr. Mayor, she has been sued. The woman you're bringing in, Mr. Mayor, she is responsible for the $10,000 missing. The woman you're bringing in, Mr. Mayor, a turn, a treasurer told us that the only audit that was proper was the one that Mr. Finch did, and the audit that, that your woman brought in was not proper. She didn't know what she was doing. You know why we're bringing Mr. Finch in? Because, you know why we're bringing Mr. Finch in, Mayor? Because he can hold you accountable. Because we're all going to hold you accountable. That's why we're bringing Mr. Finch back in. If you want your village to run properly again, if you want your village to run properly again, if you want your water bills to work again, make sure that Mr. Finch is here. Because Mr. Finch is the man, baby, that got this village working, and he's the man that's going to help us get this village working once again. Doctor, I'm talking about Mr. Finch, and he's all over the agenda. I ain't saying nothing but the agenda. Unlike yourself, uh, Francine, who's running for trustee, don't y'all vote for her? Don't y'all do it? Don't y'all do it? Bottom line is this, but listen, I'm a trustee, and if you're running for trustee and you get to this point and you don't know what you're talking about, I'm going to set the record straight. Well, trustee Aretha Burns. So bring back Mr. Finch, because Mr. Finch will get this village back in order. Thank you.
Can he harass employees? Sat in his office and talked to nobody, but that's okay.
Sorry, I wasn't going to speak tonight about the. My name is Catherine Betcher. I was not going to speak tonight about Mr. Finch, but Aretha, I'm sorry, I have to disagree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Finch was great at public works, but there is a shadow over him with the financing. The money's missing, he was in charge, and the other lady was in charge. That's what my understanding was. I may be wrong. If I'm wrong, I stand in way.
We let you talk.
I need my three minutes.
We let you talk, we let you do what you had to do in all this commotion. You said, "Please respect the person on the line." Please respect the person on the line. Thank you. Okay. No, don't, no, no, I'll say it's not about me.
But now I'm running really into trouble. Because the village was running great when we had Sheri Jazinski in there. And we had several others in there. And I'm not going to bring up any more names because it's just not right. But if you're talking about bringing back anybody, you shouldn't do it. You should not do it. Not for finance. Go with someone brand new. Someone fresh. There's got to be someone out there that is as qualified as Mr. Finch without a shadow over his name in our village. A lot of the residents have a shadow over him. You may not think so. I do. Sorry.
David Smith, resident. Regarding Mr. Finch, I personally don't agree with it. In my personal opinion, you all brought him back to create more chaos. We live in the third most populated city in the country and I refuse to believe that there is nobody within 50 miles of here that couldn't have did the job just as good, if not better, than Anthony Finch. What was your selection process? Why is it happening behind closed doors? Trustee Williams just got up here and said, "The mayor hires and fires all of these people and doesn't say a thing." What are you doing right now with Anthony Finch? Bringing him back? With private discussions, behind closed doors? Yeah, you're going to discuss it right now, but obviously you've already made your decision. It's very apparent. And you did the same thing with your fraudulent John Howard Inspector General. You did the same thing. Please. Everybody else wasn't interrupted. Please don't interrupt me. You all let Aretha stand up here and give a whole sermon about nothing. Y'all need to hear the truth. All y'all do is want to clown. This is not the circus. And Anthony Finch should not be a part of it. He was in charge, trustee Burns. You weren't around back then. You were still at the house. You were still at the house. And I'm going to respond when you respond. Because you were still at the house. You weren't even acting. Why not? Guess what? And the audit deals with finance. Trustee, are you going to be quiet? Are you going to be quiet? Because audit deals with finance. You know, audit.
Not the internal audit. Yes, I am, sir. And the trustee does not deal with finance, sir.
Audit, can you hear?
No, he does not. He does not deal with audits, sir. No, he does not.
What's wrong with you?
What's wrong with you?
I'm educated. And I don't like criminals in my village. That man was in charge. He was the treasurer. He was the director of public works. He was the internal village administrator. Dr. Jones was the last one to successfully complete an audit for this village. And you fired him and three other trustees that's up here.
Speak on that, young man. Speak on that.
No, she won't. She won't. She obviously came here for a show. She knew the cameras was coming. She's never on time. She's late every week. Forty percent absentee. Forty percent absentee. You suffer from chronic absenteeism. Don't you have a party to go to in Chicago Heights? Let's keep it real. Criminality. Show it to me on the paper. And for the record, 25-year resident, Anthony Finch is suing the village. And I have the lawsuit right here to prove it in my phone. Anthony Finch is suing the village. Let's tell some more lies. Let's tell some more lies.
Your trust, the internal audit for the trustees has nothing to do with audits. It has nothing to do with audits. He is an informational person. So if you don't want trustee, if you don't want Mr. Finch to come back, then tell the mayor, don't let Ms. Jones come back. Because she's been out front of nothing. Well, then don't tell us. If you can't speak to the mayor, don't speak to her. I'm a resident and I can say what I want. So can I. You're a resident, but you're lying. Stop lying.
I'm not lying.
Stop lying. You are lying. You are fake news. You are fake news.
I'm fake news.
David Smith, you are fake news.
I'm fake news.
David Smith, you are fake news.
I'm fake news. This is not fake news. This is an actual Cook County clerk document. Because Aretha's out of order as usual.
I moved in second. All in favor? All in favor?
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Satt. To the residents and the board and to the mayor. My biggest thing is finances. We know we're behind in everything. Audits, money missing. This is finances. Then, my question is, is why we just not getting it? When we've been behind in our audits, three years, four years? Why we just now getting it? Why this wasn't taken care of three years ago? Why do we have to get this far? In the hole? And all this stuff about money missing, people stealing and all that? Why do we get this far, four years down the pipeline? Why this wasn't taken care of in the beginning?
It was supposed to be about an item only and I'm going to respond in that way because there were some things that were asked and it shouldn't have been part of the agenda item only. But in regards to Mr. Finch, I saw that there were people saying yes and people saying no. So that's your own comment and there's no comment for me for that part. So I'm going to treat those as a comment. Someone asked about bringing back a person who was fired. Um, the trustees are trying to enact that type of comment. And then also, a lot of these that are not part of the agenda, I won't comment on. But the ones that were there as far as bringing back Mr. Finch or not bringing back Mr. Finch, those are our comments and I'll address the mass comments. And move on from there. All right, discussion and presentation announcement of new internal audit appointment. If it's nothing to do with the audit, Mr. Finch coming back, I'm not going to answer those questions. Because that's not part of it. That's why I was telling everyone, we have another two meetings to build to. And we're going to be asking questions for that too. So right now, this is just in regards to, it's supposed to just be in regards to Mr. Finch coming back or not coming, or the board trying to bring Mr. Finch back. And that's what the committee was called for. Again, discussion and presentation announcement of the new internal audit appointment.
Okay, so again, we just had our resident comments. But again, the internal auditor for the trustees has nothing to do with audits. That comes through the finance department. Mr. Finch will not be working in the finance department. Mr. Finch is working directly for the trustees and with the trustees to obtain information for the trustees and to give reports on the information that is obtained. That is his position for the trustees. It has nothing to do with audits. That is the finance department. Now let me, so Mr. Finch will not be in that capacity at all. He will be directly working and assisting trustees with information to obtain concerning anything that we need in this village. Period. That's what the internal auditor is for. Now, the person that the mayor has brought in without the consent and approval of the board, he has already rehired Dr. Jones that was fired. So, because I've got to make sure, I have to make sure that I'm speaking about an internal auditor for the trustees and I have to make it plain that Mr. Finch will not be working as an auditor in the finance department. Mr. Finch will be working directly as an assistant to the trustees to obtain information. The person that the mayor has hired, Dr. Jones, she is working directly in the finance department. She was fired. She was responsible for all the money missing. And he has brought that woman right back in here again. So if anybody has brought someone in the finance department who's responsible for $88,000 being missed under her watch, he has brought her back. He snuck her in under the cloak of darkness. That's what he did. And she, all of that money came missing on her watch. And she didn't do not one audit. Mr. Finch did. So the one who didn't do an audit and who was responsible for $88,000 on her watch, he has brought her back without the consent and without the approval of the board. And we asked him, how much money is she making? He told us, he will not answer that question. So he then brought back a fired employee who's responsible for our audits being behind.
What does that have to do with the discussion and presentation?
So again, I am making it, I am making, I am making sure that everyone understands that Mr. Finch is not coming back to work in the finance department. He's coming back to work to assist the trustees. So we want to make that play.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And so in addition, because I'm still speaking on the internal audit. So in addition, in addition to the internal auditor, in addition to the internal auditor, he was, regardless of what we think, if the mayor can bring liars and bad employees back, then I can bring back an excellent employee. I want to bring back an excellent employee. And I can guarantee you, when Mr. Finch come back here, we will see the difference. Now, what we have to ask the mayor, the question about Mr. Finch, are you going to allow him to come back and work in the capacity that the majority votes on, whatever that vote may be? That's the question. So I should not be having this conversation with you. When I get through, when I finish, Mayor, I would say, "I am done." Mayor Burgess. Okay, but they don't listen. Okay, I will continue. We are speaking about the announcement of Mr. Finch coming back. He needs to come back because he knows what's going on in this village. He knows, he knows how this village runs. And Mr. Finch will be able to make sure we know what this mayor is doing and what he's supposed to do and what he's not doing. He's going to make sure our reports keep all of you residents abreast of everything that's going on that shouldn't be in this village. He's going to help the trustees do that. That is what Mr. Finch is here for. So thank you so much.
The part that I'm not understanding in this is that we have on record four already in a total auditor, which is Kailene Zabinski. What happened to her? I'm not even done. Mr. Mayor, may I present you with the already contract that's on file for Kailene Zabinski? Did y'all take that contract off if it is? I need that in writing. If y'all decided to take that off the books. Because I wasn't aware of that. Come to find out, y'all trying to hire a new internal auditor. I don't see how that's possible at this moment, to be honest.
She has been off the books.
I'm not, trustee Burns, please, please be respectful. That's all I'm asking right now. I'm not trying to go back and forth with none of y'all. I just need some of the answers answered because y'all four do not communicate with me. And I am a sitting trustee. I'm trying to get a clear understanding. Because the document I just presented to the mayor is a contract and it was bonded by one of our old village attorneys. So how are y'all going to bring an internal auditor back to the table if y'all have not let the first one go in writing? Trustee Burns? I'm done, Mr. Mayor. Is that possible that I can get that answer?
Yes, I'm not understanding also.
See, that's the thing. That's the problem. Every time I try to say something, somebody else will say, "Go right ahead." No matter what it is you want, go right ahead.
Trustee Johnson, it's not like we haven't tried to communicate with you, but we're ignored as well. And as far as the internal auditor is concerned, so it's not confusing to people, the internal auditor, we went through the process. We created an ordinance. We had an internal auditor. She was given rights to financial information to an extent. The mayor cut off all communication between the finances and this person.
That's a lie.
That is not a lie. That is not a lie.
Yes, it is.
Yes, no, it's not. And her name is Kailene Zabinski. If anybody would like to contact her, she will tell you. Because when she told me she could not access the finance information anymore, even though by law, we did everything we were supposed to do, she was no longer able to get information. And as far as terminating her contract, there's nowhere anywhere that says you can only have one. But the point is, she was disrespected and she started doing other work for other companies. She don't have time to sit there and wait and see if she's going to have access to the finance department. So you could disagree with who this person is, but you can't disagree with the fact that the trustees are not getting financial information and we work for you.
And I understand, trustee Williams, what you're saying. But in order to protect the village, I don't want the village to get sued by this lady. Y'all leaving that as an open book for another lawsuit. I don't agree for us to have two internal auditors. Let's just pick one, put it in writing, the proper word. Let's just pick one, put it in writing the proper way so it could be filed with the clerk and called a day, then we can move forward with whatever y'all want to do. That's all I'm asking. And y'all don't communicate with me, trustee Williams. You don't. How do you try? You don't. I have emails, you don't. Honestly, you really don't. I get my information passed down through the clerk. Y'all don't have my name on this document as a trustee. Neither trustee Carter. Y'all made these decisions. I didn't. So I'm just questioning. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on. Trustee, um, Burns, we've been talking for the last hour and a half. I'm moving on. It means start at six thirty. Yes, you are. There you go again. Anyway, let me move on and, and, and clear some of these things up. First of all, and foremost, you know, I, I'm, I'm tired. I'm, I'm sitting here listening to people refer to me as incompetent or whatever the case may be. This is not what this is about. This is about trying to do business in the village. And I'm just gonna tell, and just say this from the bottom of my heart. You got people that's come up here, just talking. This election time, you can, you can, the same people that's sitting, they're running. One's running for mayor, one's running for trustee. I'm not going back and forth. And if you, see, that's what I'm saying. But see, you, 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 you want somebody to respect you. You want somebody to respect you. Would you please?
You run for mayor as well.
That's what I'm talking about. You want, you want, you want, you want, you want, okay, but then, no, no, you're not done with nothing. You gonna hear me. You gonna hear me. Okay. And, but you sit up here and you sit up, you sit up here trying to tell people and lie about certain things that are not going on in the village. And, and they told, I'm not, I'm not answering to you. I'm not answering to you. No, I don't. No, I don't. No, not the way you sit up and talk, and you talk about people. But you want somebody to respect you. Here is what I'm talking about. You see, it's okay, but you can see it. You won't, you won't stop. You won't stop. No, you can't tell me what to do. That's your problem. No, I, I said that a half hour ago, but you can't, no, don't tell me at that point because I'm talking? No. And now also, I'm trying to let the people know that, 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 that you, if you feel that it's okay to waste your money to do this back and forth, and, and then you wanna run or people wanna run for office, but they don't wanna take orders or they don't wanna to, to at least respect another person, do your homework, people. Please do your homework. That's all I say, do your homework. Because a lot of these are lies. I'm not gonna keep you here much longer. For that, we got two more meetings to do. But a lot of these things are just lies, and they, and they procrastinate because I guess they figure you talk loud. I'm saying something like, or if I scream at you, that's the way it is. Just because you say so doesn't necessarily mean that it is so. Only thing I'm saying is, I'm gonna try to run this village the best I can.
Oh, my God.
See, that's what I'm talking about. But that's okay, but they're gonna, I don't care. At this point in time, I don't care. But I do, what I do know is that, you know, we're trying to move things forward, but every time we take one step forward, we got two going backwards. But then again, you know, we, we, we're gonna be cohesive. We even had a class, and we brought some people in that said we were trying to, trying to talk. This is, this is, no, 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 okay, bye. Go ahead. No, we just took ten minutes, but go ahead, just back. Go ahead. So anyway, only thing I'm saying is this, this is what happens when you're trying to speak the truth.
Mr. Mayor, agenda items only, sir.
Trustee, would you please?
No.
I'm not, no, you're not.
Agenda item only, sir. You have to follow the rules too.
This is what I'm talking about as far as.
Agenda, agenda items only.
You don't wanna, you don't want to listen. You wanna talk.
Mr. Mayor.
You don't wanna listen, you wanna talk.
You, you are gonna do what we have to do. Agenda items only.
But that's okay, but.
Agenda items only.
I'm sure you can see that. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Moved by trustee Burns, seconded by trustee Williams. Madam clerk, does we have someone to leave? Please, go to the room.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Cohen?
Trustee Jensen?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Most carried. In about five minutes, we're going to start the second special meeting.